I need a motion to come out of executive session, please. Trustee Tobin. Trustee Kershaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Sorry we are late. We didn't mean to do that. But it's our responsibility for our delay in coming out of the executive session, as I am the timekeeper, as I've learned from Vice President Lindley. So with that, let's all stand for the Fugitive Agent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Trustee Keeter, here. Trustee Harris. Here. Trustee Kershaw.
Here.
Trustee Lambelsa.
Here.
Trustee Perez.
Here.
Secretary Sandell.
Here.
Trustee Tobin.
Here.
Vice President Lindley.
Here.
President Young.
Here. Next item on our agenda is the mission statement, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Schrader.
Thank you, President Young. Now more than ever, help the community to play a vital role in children's lives, inspiring all young people to love learning and discovery and make a difference in their well-being and long-term success. The past couple of months have been incredibly challenging for school communities, but during that time, we've seen how hard work and endurance of adults in our school down there and how we're beginning to inspire the community to endure during these uncertain times. Given that, the mission theme for this year has been simple: A, B, C, D, Above and Beyond the College Board. Each month, we're recognizing a different group of active peers with assistance of student reporters. So for women and men, we've chosen to act and learn more about our Teachers on Special Assignment for TOSAs. The Lockport City School District has supported the role of Teachers on Special Assignment for the past year or two. So our TOSAs have been incredibly helpful in supporting all staff in both outlining and delivering curriculum and instruction, technology integration activities and resources. They regularly visit. Developments for all staff. They model lessons. They encourage youth resources on a daily basis. This year, they created the first hour TOSA on demand experience, where any staff member in the district can log into a virtual meeting. And receive a detailed, real-time advice, instruction, and information. Given this split and shift to remote instruction over the past nine months, the TOSAs have been invaluable to supporting the needs of staff, students, and families that are highly regarded by the communities in the community. If you're going to hear in a moment, I have a video. I just got two proud hearings or mentions from that outfit this year. Lisa Sessition, Technology Integration at Emmett. Ms. Gollum, Technology Integration at Emmett. Jessica Ford, Technology Integration at Orange Park. Danielle Cruz, Technology Integration at Orange Park. Robyn Patake, Technology Integration at Orange Park. Michelle Burris, Mathematics, Mr. Clyde. And Heather Bickham, Department of High School. And while not a Teacher on Special flag, and I also want to recognize Marshall Hall, who's been a teaching assistant who works alongside technology integrators throughout this district. Has an internal and he's missing the statement video, so thank you, our leader. I also today want to spend a special thanking Matthew Rosenberg, a grade six student at Emmett, and Aurora R, a grade two student at Great Kelly, for their assistance in interviewing the teachers and reviewing the mission statements. So we'll be recording this video.
My name is Michelle Burris.
My name is Danielle Cruz.
My name is Heather Bickham.
My name is Kirsty Perez.
How would you serve as a TOSA in the Lockport City School District?
This is my second year as a TOSA in the Lockport City School District. I have worked as a major child technology integration coach for eight years. But I have October 27th and 29th. But in the Lockport.
This is my third year at literacy TOSA in our school district.
I have been a TOSA for seven years for the Lockport City School District. I've been a teacher in the district though for 21 years.
What is your role at a TOSA in your district?
I am a K to 12 math support person. So I support curriculum. I support tools that can be used to help kids and teachers do the math and learn the math. And I also support the benchmarking, the data piece, where we make curriculum decisions based on test results and how kids are doing.
So as a TOSA in the district, I have a very important role. I support all the reading and writing that happens. And that does not just include the ELA. It includes all the content areas, because you have to be able to read and write to do science and math. I work with the other TOSAs that are in the district to make sure there is continuity across all grade levels, to make sure that students can be constantly building their little gaps of reading and writing skills so that you can all be academically successful.
What tasks were you a part of to support staff, students, families during COVID-19?
My role kind of shifted from literacy support to technology support and getting teachers ready to work with students, both in-person and online at the same time, so a synchronized learning model. Definitely a lot of troubleshooting, running around when chickens are there and cut off, getting everybody situated. And I'm happy to say at this point, there's an LHS where I focused a lot of my time at the beginning of this year. I really am rolling and feeling pretty good about things.
I helped with the website where all of the lessons went on. I helped update that and gather lessons. I ran professional developments with other TOSAs on topics to help teach shift from working full-time in a classroom to full-time home. And I worked with students and parents to troubleshoot programs and ensure families had what needed to be said.
Class members, they get rewarded while working as a TOSA for technology specialists in the district.
One of the things I love about the job is that I've been able to have the opportunity to support teachers as they take on things that might be a little bit outside of their comfort zone, that they've never tried before, or they're new students. And it makes it really meaningful for me when they have success with that, or they share that with someone else and tell someone else how to do something. And it just, as far as I'm concerned, it just shows that learning is planned. There's no lack of something. You can see the growth in technology overall in the rest of the district has just been like especially the current right now, it's nice to know that Lockport teachers are going to try to.
She's been able to take this work that Dean and I did together and move it and push it forward since she's back here. It's been a really positive influence for this building. Other beyond that, help fellow teachers in the building with not only the ELA, but also the technology struggle. She's helped create ELA online resources for teachers and helped build our curriculum drive. I've enjoyed what she's brought to the table here and hope to continue to work here with her to improve the reading and writing here at Emmett.
Lisa's always gone above me on myself whenever we've been involved with any type of questions or anything. One activity that she really did a nice job on was we were doing CAPD and she created a project and doing slides where they learn CAPD things and they also learn how to make our problems with those slides. So they were better and better at it. And I was able to go and use those slides and all these from my new agenda. I created a history element and character trends. So we're using this with the community, most of the time in our classroom. So she's an invaluable asset to me and my students, and we very appreciate her.
This is Kirsty, I call her the mom of hers, because really sad guys picked me up in the net. But the whole thing has been unfuckingly the things that have happened this year so far. So they just, you know, there's an old saying, you can't keep an old dog in a dress. So I'm definitely no dog, it's really funny. No matter what question I have, no matter what frustration I have, no matter how many times I ask a teacher to do this question, he has to answer. And they think that's the worst thing, and I would say that Robert has been a great teacher.
I'd like to give a shout out to Jessica Ford, who's the ELA TOSA here at Lockport. Jessica's just a tremendous part of our team, our department, our building. She's always willing to work tirelessly with us, particularly during the last eight months when we've been working remotely. Jessica has been there to provide tools for us to use the technology in a way that creates meaningful lessons and engaging lessons for our students. Jess is there for us. She's our anchor. Jess, we love you. Thank you for everything you do to help us do our jobs well. You're great.
Since you've been supporting me by helping Julie, the hair, writing, and education in my classroom, she's absolutely a lover of yours. She actually had all my students last year, who didn't have me as a sibling, even though. So definitely always in and of the pocket by students and students. She's definitely one of the most powerful teachers here in this town. And she's really able to help anyone and everyone. Definitely showed me that, that we're a great friend, a great movement.
Mrs. Burris is a wonderful lady and a wonderful person. She's also updated and new students to help students be a safe place. If we ever need any help, any help, it's on the app. The public's not a reach anymore. Thank you, Mrs. Burris.
First of all, we thank Ashley for the cover of the journal and marketing for Lockport School. Heather is always there to work and learn and teach through her direction which I believe helps students study and make very significant improvements and actually helps other schools too. She's there to get feedback, she's always open and honest about things and her direction. Rachel and Ashley work with new students, one-on-one, if there's a lot of students struggling. And she has done an Instagram channel and streaming the fact where new doctors are. So that during this pandemic, while we can't drop the speed, we are still able to provide quality, working, and human learning, starting to be a perfect job. And those, my fault, but I do need to.
These ones are the guidance that help so 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 well right now. To support our students and their alliance, our guidance system, this is a now topic without the technical features of Michael Hall. Without his help, our year one outreach, both our hybrid and home alone, would not be possible. He and Heather were tirelessly committed to our staff and students, and so much, Michael and Heather.
They believe all people have been, both creative, diverse, successful, and creatively thoughtful, constantly displayed, and are studied with. Teachers and mothers are the shared responsibilities of home, school, and community.
Our mission is to contribute, to support, to help, to support, to help.
I'll just say thank you, Mrs. Schrader, for putting together, coordinating the development of the presentation that took so much, or putting all the wires together to display it. And a huge thank you to all of the TOSAs. Their work is just amazing. What they bring to our district is the specialties in their content areas, as you heard, and also that expertise of technology integration and teaching and learning. You can hear that they're so well regarded by their peers, their colleagues. And what they have been able to do as a team is to really put Lockport in the forefront of technology integration, the use of technology on a regular basis, and really have helped to promote and propel our remote learning model. Without them, we would not be where we are right now. So thank you to all of them. And certainly, thank you to the Board of Education for supporting the model. As you've heard Heather Bickham say, she's been in the position for eight years. And we added to it because the Board of Education has seen value, has taken recommendations for improving technology in Lockport. And this is what we get. This is where we are. So thank you for putting your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to add, at the end of the summer, I attended a meeting with all the area board presidents. And I remember they started talking about some of them possibly hiring TOSAs to help teach their staff. And I thought, wow, we're way ahead of that. We don't have to worry about that. We've got great TOSAs already in place, and they've been teaching our staff all summer. So thank you again to the TOSAs and just, you know, great job. And unfortunately, your work is never done. I think they are going to be even more needed, and we really appreciate them. And thank you to Mrs. Schrader for putting that together again. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the public forum on the agenda. I did not receive any comments for that. So we will move on to the next item, which is the discussion. And we have the discussion of winter sports and facility use update during COVID-19. Trustee Sandell, can you just mute for us real quick? Just, I think we've got some background noise coming through on your screen. Thank you so much. Wonderful. And so with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Bradley.
Thank you, President Young. As you mentioned, we have our Director of Facilities, Timothy Carver, here this evening along with our Director of Health, Wellness, and Athletics, Todd Sutler, to give an update. Mr. Sutler will recap the fall, the unusual fall athletic season, not just in Lockport, but in Section Six and across the state. And then he'll also bring you up to speed on the next season, the winter season, which as of today, has another twist to it, another turn to it. So we'll talk about that. And then Mr. Carver is here to also engage with the board on the community use of our facilities as we see an uptick in COVID cases regionally. So I'll turn it over to, well, would you like to hear from Mr. Sutler?
Sure. Sir? Mr. Sutler, please join us. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradley. I don't know if you are aware, but we did finish fall season. I guess I'll start there. And for the most part, it's all very successful, although trying at times. Being people to work, our venues, and then question people and sign a mail. It became a, you know, sometimes trying task. And we're questioned by people. When I'm still dealing with today from another district. People didn't like some of the stuff that we did. I had everybody sign in and staff for the meetings. I felt that it was easy with a contact trace. So I did something over and above with most of the other schools. And people weren't used to that, but I think to say I didn't care about it, cared enough to put their names down. So if something did happen, we would be able to track and I'd be able to tell people in the other district, whether it's that or. The season can sell though. I think the kids proved that we got senior targeted. And I think that people were all turned from happy. We did do split people and coming to the venue. But both our soccer, boys and girls teams made it into the semifinals of the sectionals. Unfortunately, they're unsuccessful getting past that point. Our golf team did win the National Frontier League, which was unbelievable because they did it on the day of the big tournament. So they actually won the NFL tournament and also won the actual, it was great. Boys and girls basketball country also was very successful again this year. They both finished top in the NFL. And went to sectionals this past weekend, and as you know, Sunday, we ran. It was a very frustrating day. Probably not our best times, but they showed very well. They had boys finished second, a girls finished third overall. And we did have somebody finish in the cup high that was sitting with him. And she wasn't even able to run for a month, so we kind of just see the bad start. Getting away too hard. And tennis, I think we finished third in tennis. So we had an overall fairly good season, especially in our league. Winner, the top, I just give you three basic forums. There are two of them are from NISP, that's our state organization right now. I think all of you know who they are. New York State Public High School Association, basically what it is, State Public Association. Those are documents from our president, our executive director of that, and from JES. He was actually in a meeting with myself and Michelle Bradley today. You listen, Bradley and I were part of the Section Six meeting today. And some of these things that you see on this top forum, it's not as long as our last season. And things are possibly changing, like you alluded to. First and foremost, what we have are high-risk sports again, and of course, low-risk moderate. So today, as today on 11:30, we were supposed to start boys swimming, bowling, and indoor track. All sports which we have are considered moderate or low-risk. Unfortunately, today, that took a little turn. And we have now, as a section, the section decided, and it was unanimous, a vote pretty much, that we were going to put a pause on the 11:30 and move to the summer 14th. And I do believe, I guess I could say this, I do believe the ECI team, which is one of the leads of personnel in county, they may actually be going tomorrow. They may be actually, I'm not sure if they're 100%, going to move theirs to one-four. The governor, the other day, came out and said that projected set of eight for the high-risk sports will not be to one-four, one-four. Funny how everyone wanted to start the January and figure out moving again yet. But, I'm not sure it's the United States. Anyway, it's not fun. It's sad, bro. It's just hard to get your ass on this. Indoor track, I think it's something, I would like some input by all of you, if I could. Boys and girls, indoor track is going to be, I don't know how to say it other than it's going to be difficult. I support it. I want them to do it. But I think it's going to be hard. Right now, I'm going down in Cataracts County and Algeni County, which is where we have to go, basically, the only venue we have in county. You know, we're going to be putting our kids on buses on Saturdays and Sundays. Sometimes it's 10:00 in the morning, sometimes it's 3:00 in the afternoon. Then they come back, and we will be sending them on Saturday at some. I don't know how many schools will be there yet, because I know some schools are not participating. I think Falls is one of them. They've said that they are not going down there. It is a pretty long drive, a long drive. But, you know, it's 40-year-old kids that we would have, student athletes, that definitely would be able to participate in some type of athletic competition, which is not bad for us. I think it's good. Next one down, modified. We're into that question again. I could do a modified boys and girls swim, but it's going to probably be late. My boys, varsity, probably will swim at 2:30, 3 o'clock. My JV will come in at 5:00. Now you're talking about picking all our modified boys and girls, which is a combined team, back to the pool, which I don't know how that's going to go over. So it's another one that I really need some input on. And of course, the transportation plays into that particular decision. With that, even if we do come back and start to play basketball, say in January, we're still going to have to consider, I know I have until December, and it gives us some time, but if modified basketball, and wrestling, as much as I want to plan, I think magazines, transportation, how we're going to get them there. And I just, it's something that I think needs to be discussed. Because now, if we start all these a lot later, now we're going to start compressing things and a lot of people will be waiting at the same time and needing the facilities at the same time. So it's going to be, it's going to be an added hardship on the faculty, might be. Sports, pool, one of the last things that I'd really like to discuss spectators. I will tell you that the ECI team, last season, fall, they did, most of their schools did participate in swimming. We are picking up a few of them in the fall Session Two, but not all of them, the girls. But every single one did not have spectators. Some actually swam virtually, which means they didn't want people in their place. So Sweet Home, I'll give you an example, Sweet Home swam Williams-Blaze. Sweet Home swam Sweet Home, Williams-Blaze swam Williams-Blaze. And they're trying to coordinate as close as they could, but when they swam the same event, and then they had a wrap at each place, and then they had timers at each place. So they went on time races. So that's how they did it. But I will tell you that I think the majority of the people in the NFL and National Frontier League are not in favor of having spectators. I will get that fell directly meeting on Friday, which is not a normal date, but because of what's, and what's happened in the last couple of days, they want to meet Friday, get everything passed out. So spectators will be an issue, I think, and bowling as well. I don't think they're going to run into parents in the bowling venue and still haven't figured out how the bowlers are going to bowl, whether they're going to be on the same lanes or whether they're going to separate both schools. And I'm excited for lanes. They can bowl with each other. They'll just bowl on score, and they'll bowl the other top three bowlers or bowl them down there, something to that. Those things are all being discussed. As you see, I wrote down, and we'll try to discuss wrestling, basketball, competitive cheer, hockey, high risks right now. They can't do absolutely anything until at least one-four. And I think Governor Formo is going to go ahead and talk about that again when we get closer to that table. Budget right now, I'm still doing okay with the budget. And facilities, I'll talk about with Mr. Carver there again in this pretty much nice little update.
I have a question. I don't know if I have a remote control. You didn't have the backup, seeing the documents. You're emailing us those documents.
Yeah.
Which is a lot of it, but.
I believe that the two from the New York State Public High Schools Athletic Association, I believe Superintendent Bradley emailed those to us earlier this afternoon. So you did have those two documents, but then if Mr. Sutler wants to just send over this, just kind of overview sheet, that would be great.
Yeah, I know a bunch of documents they were referring. Kind of got that one, but without any explanation, it's hard to follow. Thank you.
So Todd, let's go back to one of the things.
So Todd, um, let's go back to what are the things you would like to add?
Uh, I'm, I would say, um, I, I don't, I don't know how we feel as a group of indoor track. And I guess modified would be, um, important more and also spectators. It's okay that we're not going to have them at this time, it's going to be hard. But I may arrange something for the seniors, um, senior nights, so parents can come out and see if they're able to lead. But I believe it's probably not that interesting, it's just for other sports first.
Um, Trustee Brad?
Uh, if there's indoor track, those, is that boys and girls, would you largely be in the end game? Now, there are, they'll probably, we usually have a lot of. I think they're going to try to compress it a little bit, because it'll be hard for bussing. That's another issue, I'm going to be sending two buses possibly per day, which, I think, is ridiculous. But I'm willing to do it, I'm willing to do it, but, um, you know, that aside from running in the halls and trying to keep it as pressed as possible so I don't have to burden, you know, as many as 10 staff as possible and clean after 8:00, like if somebody's running in the halls.
So what is the purpose of going to Hope's, is that for track?
Yeah, that's the, that's where all competitions will be, because all the state venues have kicked us off. So no for going here, no tough state, they have since told us that they're shutting everything down, they're not even having any of these sports. We're not even allowed in the venue. And Hope has only given us a three-week window, three-weekend window. The three weekends to compete as much as you can, and they're kicking us off.
With no further advance, but with no.
No, they're not, this is federated, yes, this is federated, it's a little different. We, more than likely will not be going to a state indoor track. He did say that they're not canceling that today at our meeting, but I can't see how they're going to be for it. Mr. Bradley agreed to do online.
And first, uh, swimming, those, I would like it. We haven't had any, uh, court yet, and if we are not, why would we, I think, swimming, uh, right, uh?
I, again, I, I just want to, I want to make that decision, you know, I, I'd rather that we support.
You start with that now, and then my question would be, if you're giving to the golf and volleyball, not that it's going to be for us, for us to be modified and all sports also, would you be prepared?
Right, and I don't know what those sports are even going to look like, you know, are we going to have fans in there or not? You know, I want more kids to play too, some of the, some of the schools that haven't, like, modified kids to play, but they're playing themselves, or they're only using up for a couple different different clubs. I, for, now, I just don't have my venues, I don't get to have, I have venues, but I, and they have to transport, especially not by use of freshman use to a different venue in order to get their playing cabinet, which we want our kids going fast, city at the time, in our own home department. To do.
Um, Trustee Lambauser?
Um, I just, if, if the school itself goes to revolt, what happens to sports? If, if we, if they are ordered to remote, they cease and desist until the time we can go back in the same manner. If we choose to go out, like, and I'll give you a couple examples, time already last night it did. They all had sports in the Falls, even though they were all virtual, because they chose to go remote. So if you don't have a choice, like right now, all the orange schools are being told, you're done. So they have to stop. So that's why I think they paused for the 14th, they knew inevitable was coming. I was told yesterday that I felt that they were going to vote and move all their spins to January, because they knew four years were coming. And we were probably, as we were going to fall school, because five of our schools are in the zone, yeah. So, like, they were going to go to London and yellow today, but really four and a half are in the zone, so we won't have anybody to play.
Any other, uh, questions or? So I have, yeah, I haven't, Trustee here, sorry.
I don't, that's okay, um, I, I don't see the, the list that, um, that Mr. Supla was working from in terms of, I don't see that in our emails, in terms of which ones are high-risk and which are not. So I guess I wanted clarification on basketball and wrestling, those are not high-risk, or they are?
No, they are. Wrestling, basketball, cheer, and hockey are all high-risk.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to say, I, I felt like they would be, so, thank you.
Trustee Tito?
Just my concern is with the, um, I don't know so much with the training or the bowling, but with the indoor track, um, I know that there were kids that never played soccer that went out, like my son did one. Um, because they wanted to interact and be with the kids and stuff. So, um, I know you're saying 40 kids, but I know you're probably going to get a lot of kids that try out, which is forced to be difficult inside to accommodate, you got to try it out. I mean, is there some kind of way maybe you could do something for the seniors? And, I mean, if they to just limit them, because there are some kids that are, uh, that are good, that really need that exposure, the salary that you've got, you know?
I know, it's funny you say that, you know, I mean, you're right, um, it used to be that way. It, how people started with us was, there was a lot of seniors, it was varsity only, we never really had JV. But as it became more popular, they opened it up a little bit more. And, and really, they, we never had any separate figures unless we were personally invited by a coach. That has been brought up to me by one of our coaches, that could we possibly do our kids that we know, that would probably fail that? Yeah. Which I don't mind, I, I want to, I want to compete, that's, I'm happy about that. But it's just, I do worry about going down in the middle of January, down in Hope. We already had an instance last year where we didn't get back to 2:30 in the morning.
I was just going to ask you, do you know the dates of when, uh, those whole weekend?
Yeah, all three dates are three Saturdays in a row in January, which couldn't be worse for us, really. That's, we had a bus go off the side of the road, so that's kind of related.
Let's not talk about it. But we do know what, you know, the Southern tier looks like in January. Okay, um, and you said that you have a meeting tomorrow?
Friday with the, uh, National Frontier League.
Okay.
Again, this bought me a little bit more time, at least you, you know where we're at, um. Again, it's not scheduled now, it's scheduled for the summer 14th, but, you know, you think about that, it's about three weeks away, really. And it's a little over three weeks away, not much time to decide that, but, um, I don't know how better we're going to be this in West New York in three weeks. I hope it's not this long. Let me see if we can run it that way. Let me get pushed again.
Would the intention for the swimming, to do it virtually like you were speaking about?
I think they're going to leave it up to independent districts, like my building is big enough that I can invite another team here. I'll put the kids in the stands, not the parents. You know, unfortunately, I can't have parents, I'm going to put the kids in the stands. So they'll spread out. And then this way, they can be spread out on the deck, because they have to be six, they're supposed to be, we looked at the sheet, supposed to be six feet hard on the deck too, so the first person up on the, on the block, he's on the block, that person's supposed to be six feet high. And then, you know, you, it's, it's not easy, but we're going to make it work, but I just think it's better that we're spreading people out. I think it's, especially the teams, they need to have a sound, they need to spread out a little bit, and go a little bit.
Any other, um, comments or questions for Mr. Supla or any other?
I have.
Go ahead, Trustee here.
Did you? Um, did you need to put them up on the spectators, because, um, I, I, I think it's okay to have them, especially when the governor is saying we can't even have more than 10 people, and nobody outside our own halls is at Thanksgiving and.
Right, I think it makes sense that we don't, yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with, um, Trustee Brad about modified. I think that, you know, we, we said for fall that it was, we were going to not go with the modified. It was going to, you know, just kind of add too much to the plate of everyone, and then it was going to be adding more complications in terms of scheduling and all of that. So I, I agree that that is a slippery slope to start going down as well. Um, was there anything else, what, what else did we need?
So, um, Todd, are you prepared for your meeting on Saturday, when you're asked what will last for, how long is it?
And I'll talk to you then before I go in, I'll talk to you then outside, this makes it around the same date. And then, like I said, I'll stay with Tim on the last topic of the facility.
So indoor track, uh, swimming, and, uh, what was the third I need, direction of Todd?
Uh, bowling.
Bowling, yeah.
So I'll be, um, looking to send the four teams if we need all.
Uh, and then in terms of, just a overview question, so if we are in a yellow zone or an orange zone, and we are testing, or, you know, maybe choose to continue to have this sports, um, happening, or however that works out, would the limits that the state puts out on number of people in an area still apply? I mean, does that apply for these situations? So, I don't know all the numbers, is it 25 people in a, in a, in an area for a yellow zone? So would that apply to these sporting events? I mean, does that?
Because they made exception on the outside where, because we were outside, they did the 25 per team in that zone. So in Lancaster, because they were in yellow, we were only allowed to have 25 fans. It is not counted kids on the field.
I see, okay.
Here, we're allowed 50, because I allowed two per adult. So that was, you know, put, they were only allowed to bring 25 here too, so I had to check to make sure that they were all set. So, I mean, that's, uh, it's, it's weird timing, but yeah, you're right, I, I don't know how I would, especially with practice. I have to go through the rules again, it came out for winter, um, and I'll go through them every year, but I don't know if I can have every people practicing at the same time either. So they'll probably have to practice in waves, because I can't have 40 to 50 people, you know, gathered together at once either. I have to have 10 in the quay room, 10 in the gym, 10 in the hallway, I got to spread them all out.
All right, anything else for anyone before we?
I would just like to wrap up by, um, first of all, congratulating the, um, student athletes and the coaches for their accomplishments, um, in these unusual times. Um, and thank Mr. Supla, our director of athletics, um, along with section six president, Scott Banker, and section six, um, new executive director, what it's time to become new executive director of section six, American Polyglot, um, for, for their difficult, um, decisions that they have to make, um, but they're, but they're timely. Um, and, you know, the, the whole idea is to make the best of the situation to provide these participation opportunities for us and state ways. And certainly the, the logistics that you, as you've heard, are quite complicated. So, um, thanks to Todd and his secretary, Ailey, for, um, making it work in law court. And, um, hopefully we can move forward with the winter season for law court high school students.
Okay, um, thank you, and so I guess we will move on to the discussion of the facility use, um, during COVID. The end of the, uh, first semester, we had said that we were going to review it, um, to kind of see where things are. And we all see where things are, but I will turn that over to you, Mrs. Bradley, or to Mr. Parker.
Yeah, so that's really where we are. Um, I, 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 I bet, I believe you, we're hoping we'd be in a, a better place, a better position, but, um, the facts and the reality, um, both present themselves as, as being in almost a, a more concerning position related to COVID-19. Um, when we talk about use of our facilities in the district, um, we, we're bringing students in in a hybrid model. Um, all adults and students are diligently complying with social distancing and hand washing and mask wearing and monitoring their health. Um, so that brings us to, um, you know, do we, uh, do we provide access to the community, to our facilities, um, at this time, as one of the principles of the yellow zone? Mr. Parker, you want to add anything to the talk?
Um, I would actually, um, I want just to thank my staff, because they have done me all the stuff, all the other stuff they've done. And to point out, uh, the one thing I picked out of, of our student base was the possibility of student teams back-to-back. That back-to-back sanitation has taken place in the clean. So anytime we add a group, we're adding more sanitation and more time for the custodial staff. It is stretched pretty thin right now, I mean, we can definitely make it happen for our staff and students, but I think if we're going to do outside groups, as much as we'll have men, I think it's just putting a, a heck of a number of facilities that we probably have done at this time, especially with the bowling and all the girls.
Yeah, definitely accolades and kudos to our, um, our custodial staff, that, um, maintenance, uh, department. Uh, as Tim said, they're on top, that they're on their toes, um, and they really are doing, um, incredible work in keeping our environment, um, clean and disinfected.
Um, Secretary Sandal is, uh, chair of the facilities committee, do you have anything at this point you would like to add?
Well, I guess we did, this need to be more specific about policy that public, I guess, all the facilities that you, no facility being used by the public today, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Like, for example, I think, uh, the fitness center, or any of the gyms, or any pools, or anything like that? Or, I mean, is there any building being used for any reason by the public today?
No, no building is being used even for, uh, civil service, as we've been able to use our buildings for cash.
Okay, so, are we saying that we're going to just do that in the second quarter? Uh, so, in the second quarter, is that, is that what we're saying today?
I guess is that, would that be the recommendation, um, would that be your recommendation?
I, I think so, I think like everything else we're doing, um, continue to monitor situations and, um, review them and, um, bring them back for discussion, um, based on the circumstances that we're faced with those key points throughout the remainder of the school year.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, and that's what we're, we're here today.
So second quarter, if that's, I, if that's the next key point, then. Yeah, if, if everyone is on board with that, if you'd like to, I think it is, um, I, I think this entire board, I don't want to necessarily speak for everyone, but I don't think anyone here wants to, um, tax our, um, staff at all anymore than they are already, um, being worked. I don't think we want to add to anyone's plate at this point, uh, as much as we would love to have the public use our facilities and, uh, you know, it is about safety at this point and, um, you know, with, with everything going on, I think that it would make sense to extend, um, what we've been doing until at least the next, end of the next semester, if everyone is, um, okay with that. And if anyone has anything else they would like to add. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that it also could open them up to the risk, um, so with these staff. And I don't think right now is the time to expose them to more people than, I mean, we don't even want kids, you know, congregating in groups around our facilities for that, so. Doesn't make sense to bring them in from outside when we haven't been able to screen them.
Anything else, or anyone else?
Oh, you're good.
Okay. Okay. I had to say the end of the first semester, the end of the second quarter, review of that? Yes, that's what I got to say. Did I, did I say the end of the first semester?
So by then, maybe, um, we're gonna talk about special winter season, is we getting, we're in the new facilities.
Yes, we might be talking about what you're gonna do with winter sports at this point, which is a faculty, but, so. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you, Mr. Suttlak.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item on our agenda are the approval of the, um, proposed revised agenda. And, um, Ms. Corder, remind me, do I need a separate thing for each one?
Yeah.
Okay, thoughtful. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the proposed revised agenda, please. Trustee Pratt, I need a second.
Second.
Vice President Linderman, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have thumbs up and thumbs down. Yes, we do.
Put it down quickly.
Okay, next, I need an approval for the proposed minutes for the work session meeting of October 7th, 2020. I need a motion, please. Trustee Kershaw, I need a second. Trustee Tobin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carried. I also need an approval for the proposed minutes for the regular meeting of October 14th, 2020. Motion, please. Trustee Tobin, second?
Second.
Vice President Linderman, discussion. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Ms. Corder, did you get, uh, those, okay. 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 Motion is carried. Next, um, item on our agenda, our business matters, one through 13. I need a motion to approve, please.
I'll move.
Vice President Linderman, second?
Second.
Who is that? Trustee Kershaw, um, discussion.
I have the calendar on here too, version of the calendar. So I'm assuming we're going to version it.
We, uh, we only have one in Congress, right?
That's the second one. You received the first one in your packet on Friday, did not include the superintendent conference day.
This is the amended one that we have?
Yes, amended one. Yes, it's superintendent conference day, amended third. So I just need to know which one you're adding.
So this would be the, uh, so we're talking about number eight, which is the approval of the amended 2020, 21 school district calendar. Everyone has, um, the revised, uh, j, um, calendar in front of them.
I did send it to the justice.
So the, the calendar amendments, um, in front of board includes two areas. One is an amendment to the, uh, January 2021 New York State Education Regents, High School Regents Examination Program. The New York State Education Department recently canceled January 2021 Regents' Exams. Um, those dates are January 26th to January 29th of 2021. With the cancellation of Regents' Exams in January, those four days will become instructional days. Um, so that's one amendment to the calendar. The second amendment to the calendar includes Monday, November 30th, um, as a superintendent's conference day. We utilize three superintendent's conference days. School districts are allowed to have four. This would be the fourth and final superintendent's conference day. And it would be used for all of our teachers, uh, support staff, administrators, all of our employees to prepare on the Monday following Thanksgiving recess for a potential shift to full remote learning with the multiple strategy by the New York State, um, governor. So those are the two amendments to the calendar.
Okay, I also would like to just, um, make note of items, number seven, number, where is that? Number seven, number 10, number 12, and number 13. Um, these are all donations that were made to the district. And so I just would like to, um, thank, um, the Barge Panel Optimist Club of Lockport. They are generously donating hats and mittens to our students. We have a donation of 150 winter coats from the Lockport City firefighters. We have a donation of $250 to North Park Junior High School from Surface America. And we have a donation of $200 to North Park Junior High School from Colvin Car Wash. So I would just like to thank, um, all of those groups for generously donating to, um, the district. And of course, we are getting into the, the cold, um, weather, so the mittens and the hats and the coats are great. And I know that, um, if you could just remind me, the, the cash donations were for kids, I believe, for the students?
No, they had to, they were putting together, um, bags, the sev, the necessary bags for the students and the kids.
So thank you to everyone, um, on those groups for, for those donations.
Yeah, the partnerships within our community and the donations from the small businesses, um, are helping. Um, everybody's suffering. Everybody has, um, other things that they could be doing and thinking of, but, um, to, to be able to have a partnership with Lockport and the small things, uh, small businesses that have been doing this is very much appreciated.
So any, um, further discussion of the business matters? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Maybe that two thumbs up. Uh, opposed? Motion is carried. Next item on our agenda, our personnel matters. We have items one through seven dated November 6th. I need a motion, please. Trustee Kershaw, second? Trustee Tobin, sorry, Trustee Pratt, I saw it last minute. Um, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, did we get two thumbs? Uh, it's okay. Uh, motion is carried. Next item we have also under personnel matters, we have items eight through 15 dated November 13th. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Vice President Linderman, second? Trustee Pratt, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, next item on our agenda are the first reading and review of the following policies. We are not going to take action on these items tonight. We have 6570 remote working for employees, 7150 remote learning, 5670 records management, 5676 privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. Trustee Hare, as, uh, chair of the policy committee, did you want to add anything about these policies? Or would you like to save that for the second meeting?
Um, I, I guess, I think that thanks to staff members who helped us to develop those, um, policies because it was a really wonderful collaborative experience. Um, and I think that they appreciated it as much as we appreciated it. So I just wanted to give them all of their help.
Also, I, I did, uh, just, I'll just add that I have a couple little typo errors that I picked up. So I will definitely send those over to you as the chair or whatever. You don't, didn't get that to you yet, so. Okay, next item on our agenda are special education matters. We have committee on preschool as special education and a committee on special education. I need a motion to approve, please. Trustee Tobin, I need a second?
Second.
Vice President Linderman, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the legislative update. Trustee Hare.
Um, I'm, I don't really have anything to add to the email I sent out. Um, just, they're not in session, so there's not a lot to report and we've got some good bills to keep an eye on.
Okay, thank you. And thank you again for sending those ahead of time so we can all read those. Okay, next item on the agenda are board president's comments. Tonight, I, um, I just want to take a minute because it's the week before Thanksgiving, just to thank everyone, um, just to say how thankful I am for, um, just a lot of things. I have been president for all of, uh, four months at this point. And I just want to thank this board for being very patient and flexible and collaborative with me and helping me get through this. I want to thank, uh, just the, all of our staff, um, obviously all of our administrators for all the work that they're doing, all of our staff for everything they do, and our students for doing the best they can for bringing it every day. Um, and just for them also being resilient and flexible. And I think it's, you know, time to thank them too for all their hard work. It's, it's tough for them. And the parents, thank you for all the extra work you're putting in. And to the community, uh, I said when I first started that the only way we were gonna make it through any of our challenging times was to work together. And I think we are doing that. And I, um, just want to take this minute to thank everyone, um, truly from the bottom of my heart. I, um, it is a time to reflect and I, and I was reflecting earlier and just, um, thank you, everyone. So. Enough of that mushy stuff. Now we will move on to committee of the whole. And so we will start with, um, we'll start with Secretary Sandell, who's joining us virtually.
Well, um, I, I also appreciate, I say, thank you for allowing me to be virtual. Um, that helps a lot. I apologize for the feedback. I know we get terrible feedback here. I try to keep my volume down well, but, um, not sure if that's fault or not. Um, only thing I wanted to mention is I, I thank both the, uh, all of the facilities committee, uh, and all of board members of the administration for moving young and ready and our architect and staying on task and on target to, um, um, a project that will really include, um, a public condition survey in May. That's, that, that's our primary target number one. And the target number two is the, hooking other, the rest of our employees and, and our overall plan to see how, when, what we might do in May. In addition to that, how we will have a facilities committee have the third of December, to start that discussion. So I thank you for everybody's support. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Hare.
I don't think it's your body because I haven't, not gotten your body. That's not what it is. Um, I just want to quickly, um, thank, um, everyone. The, I'm so grateful for the patience, dedication, and flexibility of all the members of our school community. Um, it's really been inspiring to see. Last spring was inspiring, but this has been, it's really blown me away how, um, flexible and patient and, um, really dedicated, um, every member of our school community is, from the students, the parents, the staff members, educators, administration. It's really been, um, really incredible to see. Not all districts have been, uh, able to accomplish what we have, and I'm so proud. Be safe out there. Be careful next week.
Trustee Pratt.
I'm hopeful. Thank you.
Trustee Tobin.
Um, I need to go to things. As your notebook rep, um, we are moving ahead with plans for our legislative breakfast in January, though at this point it looks like it will be virtual. So not so much a breakfast as kids come and watch us on screen. Um, NISBA is trying to, um, really submit what it stands for. And it's, we would like us to reach out to our boards, and there's your rep on here doing that right now. What do you want them to do? What do you want them to be? Do you want them to be like a little mini NISBA? What do you want from this organization? So if you guys could think about that, what, um, if it's training, if it's guidance, if it's policy help, what is it that you'd like to do and let me know? Um, we've also reached out to the superintendents for their feedback for our legislative process. So I'm looking for that from them. In December is the deadline we give them, so we can, you know, firm up our plans for our program in January. Um, I'm also, uh, slowly but surely getting through all of the NISBA, um, workshops. What was really nice about attending NISBA this year is that we didn't actually attend it and it's all virtual. And I have until December to go through them. So I get to go through way more than I ever would have if I'd gone in person. So, um, as I'm going through them, as, as I find the value to our districts, I also need to share that with you guys. Um, on, that's it, as far as my official role. I just want to say thank you so much to the student leaders and the interviewers tonight from Mission State. They're using such a nice job and, uh, whatever you think to highlight those process that have been doing phenomenal, phenomenal work in addition to all of our staff. Um, congratulations to our fall athletes and our teams for doing so well in some trying times. Thank you so much for all those wonderful donations, especially today. It was very cool. So I know we have a lot of kids that are really gonna be needing hats and mittens and coats. Um, we have at our senior, the academic L coming up on December 1st. So congratulations to this incredible list of students in here that have just gone above and beyond, um, and, and just terribly tried in time. And I know everyone's trying extra hard, but to firm that on top of everything else is a really big achievement. And I hope you're all very proud of yourselves because you did it. And I just, um, I hope everyone has a happy, but most importantly, a safe holiday break. So that's when we'll see you before we, before we leave for our Thanksgiving. Um, just enjoy your break. Stay, you know, disconnected. Stay out of your radio for a while and just really enjoy your friends and family, whether that's virtually or in small gatherings. Just be safe and happy.
Thank you. And we will definitely, um, get back to you on, um, the things you need for the notebook. Um, Trustee Lambalde.
I was gonna touch on the academic L. Uh, Trustee Tobin did so well.
Okay, great. Trustee Kershaw.
I actually think everyone has kind of said when I wanted to say I continue to be thankful, um, across the board. Um, and so I'll just say, yeah, that's definitely a safe kind of dinner.
Okay. Trustee Tito.
The same. I did want to say that I am thankful for, you know, for being safe, you know, and keeping safe and not being, you know, not getting sick, you know, I'll be thankful for that. So whatever it is that we are doing to keep ourselves avoid, that is all continuing, you know, to, to stay safe. And, you know, there's, there's so many people that give us, our families, the district, you know, everybody. So just, everyone have a safe Thanksgiving and, um, remember what is important. And thank you. That's it. Goodbye.
Yeah, finally, Vice President Linderman.
Uh, thank you, President. Um, just a couple things. Uh, again, it was great to see the spotlight on our toses. Uh, and it was interesting, uh, President Young's comment that some districts are looking at toses now. And, uh, I just, I think it goes to show that, once again, we're ahead of the curve and, um, our district leadership, um, has shown that, uh, we are leaders, uh, in many areas. And, uh, they should be. They should be congratulated on that. And President Young, you're too modest. You've shown tremendous patience and leadership at this board during a very difficult time. So I want to thank you. Thank you, and that's it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Superintendents' Comments.
Thank you, President Young. I echo all of the sentiments that were shared. So I want to invite all of the board members. Thank you for your service, thank you for your time, thank you for your ideas in helping our district stay safe and move forward. It's a great deal of work. And we are all very intelligent, and we have your own skill set. And when they're brought together, we're able to really accomplish some big things. So thank you. And I just want to remind everyone of the Thanksgiving recess. We will be, fingers crossed, in session Monday and Tuesday with the hybrid model. And of course, most students will have full remote. This year, the Lockport City School District is closed on Wednesday. So staff and students will not be in attendance on Wednesday. Thursday, obviously, is Thanksgiving, and we're closed Friday. Monday, following Thanksgiving recess, has been approved by the Board of Education as leading for a superintendent's conference day, as I already mentioned, that day will be the staff, employees only, students will not be in attendance, either hybrid or remote. So my best wishes to everyone for a safe and happy and healthy recess.
Hi, next item was Public Forum for General Interest. I did not receive any comments for that. So we will go to the last item on the agenda, and that is to adjourn. I need a motion, please.
Opposed.
Trustee Hare, second.
Second.
Trustee Tovin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.